We have reached the appointed hour, so it's time to call our meeting to order. This is our regular meeting for March 19th, 2019. Welcome to everyone, thank you for coming. Do we have a motion to come out of closed session and for certification?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered.
Thank you, Dr. Hall-Lenner. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. I believe we have one motion from our closed session regarding personnel.
I move to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the personnel agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions? That motion carries. I believe we have some special guests for our pledge of allegiance. Would you stand, please?
Good evening. We have three lovely ladies. We have Asia, Alexandra, and Olivia. They are part of our Girls in Power group.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Roll call, Ms. Moore.
Rebecca Jester.
Present.
Amy Phillips.
Present.
Dr. Andrea Hall-Lenner.
Present.
Michelle Williams.
Present.
Jessica Grant.
Present.
Robert Holt.
Present.
Carrie Dunn.
Present.
Thank you. We have no one signed up for citizens' time, so we'll move to item number three, our consent agenda, and we have some minutes to approve. Thursday, December the 13th, and Thursday, February 21st.
February 21st, 2018.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no.
I abstain.
And one abstention. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the school board meeting minutes for Thursday, February 21st, 2019 as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Jester. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Pose no. And one abstention. Motion carries. Thank you. Report of the superintendent, Ms. Sterling.
Thank you so much, Chairman Holt, distinguished board members. At this time, we will start the superintendent's report with good news. Mr. Kelvin Edwards will be doing good news. Ms. Gail Wade is not with us this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Sterling. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, and to the Franklin City Public Schools Board, let's start this evening off with good news, and our first good news is we are reporting out on our school clean award. And so, for the cleanest school that we have in Franklin City Public School, and I have to say this month because it's always a neck-and-neck tie, it is Joseph P. King Jr. Middle School.
Excellent.
And that will conclude our good news, as we will go back and retaliate our teacher attendance and student attendance.
Excellent. Thank you. Our student liaison report. Our student is not with us this evening, so I will be reading her report from Grace. Franklin High School attended the HBCU Festival in Washington, DC. Forty students attended. Heist of the century, and check please, FHS Theater Production. It was a wonderful production. FHS Special Olympics Basketball Team, season record, three and one. Robotics for FHS Team is now currently ranked third out of 127 schools after two competitions. Fall and winter athletic banquet was held. Spring sports is in full swing. Baseball, softball, track, tennis, and soccer. Eggs and issues post legislative breakfast at Franklin Baptist Church. Eighteen students attended. Also, our students attended the Virginia Opera performance of Madame Butterfly. Twenty-five students attended. FHS testing benchmark, number-one assessment, no, excuse me, the first assessment for second semester was taken. Spring and, of course, writing SOLs were taken as well. JP King Jr. Middle School Saturday Academies held February 23rd, March 2nd, and March 9th. SOL testing for eighth graders tested in writing on March 12th and 13th. Parents as partners math escape room held on March 14th, and JP King now has 100% phone book one-on-one initiative implemented at their schools. Eighth grader successes. Eighteen students completed ninth grade PE for a high school credit, the first at JP Certified in CPR, first, the students are now certified in CPR, first aid, and AED. Forty-four students also participated in intramural sports. SP Morton Elementary School, first semester honor roll award ceremony was held. Dairy Queen Night was held on March 7th. Dads and Donuts will be Monday, March 25th, 7:45 a.m. to 8:30 a.m., and save the date for SOL extravaganza, March 29th, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. K through five SOL family extravaganza, SOL games, free books, and resources will be given out during that time. And that concludes our student liaisons report. Next, from the Human Resource Department, for the facility use report for the monthly usage will be SP Morton Gymnasium, January 17th through March 25th. The Franklin Department of Parks and Recreation's Winter Youth Basketball and Cheer Program Next, the policy updates were provided to the board with the explanation of revisions at our last meeting. If anybody has any questions, we can review them, or we can hold off to the next meeting in our work session if you like.
It was a pleasure of the board regarding the policy update. We've had a chance to review them.
I believe these were the policy updates provided by BSB.
Yes, they were.
And I'm comfortable with voting on them. I've reviewed them.
Excellent.
Would you like to make a motion? Do we accept?
Yeah, I can, I'll make a motion if it's the will of the board to approve the policy amendments as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the policy update signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Now we'll have the Division Financial Report from our Director of Finance, Ms. Pamela Kendrick.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In your board package, you have the budget comparison report for the month of February. As you can see, we've collected 55.44% of our revenues, and of those revenues, we have expended 51.58%. Also, if you would take a look at technology, you'll see that the current budget is at 83.52%. But this does not include the transfer request that you all approved at the end of February. So you'll see a change, a decrease in that number once that request is approved by the So our revenues less our expenditures currently overall is the $682,336. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll have Mr. Edwards, who will be doing our nutrition, transportation, and everything else.
Yes, ma'am. Once again, give me to the board, and looking at our school nutrition balance plan that we presented, as you know, we had a three-month excess, and that was $98,835.97. We required with the VDOE policy, and we have an excess balance expenditure plan submission, and we are waiting to receive word. We do believe our plan will be approved, and we will put those funds to use in form of improvements in our school nutrition program. And here is the cost of the items that we submitted in the plan. Food costs, ice machines, new personnel, and to the board, the new personnel will be to, for the salad bars that have been implemented at Franklin High School and also at Joseph P. King Jr. Middle School. And there are, there's an example of the wonderful salad bar that's at Franklin High School, and we can say that it officially begin on Monday, March 11th, and we've had In operations, our project updates. Playground installation is complete. One final addition to the playground is the implementation of mulch. We cannot just put regular mulch down. It has to be hypoallergenic mulch, and so we are waiting for the arrival of our hypoallergenic mulch so that our students, we can have a formal ribbon-cutting ceremony to welcome the students to their new playground, and we hope to have that complete very, very shortly. The roof is completed at SP Morton Elementary School, and our security wall at Franklin High School is scheduled to begin over spring break, and we have been confirmed that it will be completed before spring break ends. Here are pictures of the roof at SP Morton. Transportation Department. We've started a new CDL class for bus drivers, and we're happy to say that we are training five trainees from Southampton County, and Ms. Garrett and Ms. Vick are our CDL trainers, and the class began, and it's going into its second week, and once the class is complete, the drivers will go take their assessment at the DMV. That class takes about two weeks, and then it's two exams that you have to pass. Federal programs. Our 21st Century Program, we're happy to say we have submitted year-three application for SP Morton and Joseph P. King Jr. Middle School. As you know, the 21st Century Program is our after-school program, and we are proud to say that we're serving over 60 students at each campus daily, Monday through Thursday. Title II monitoring visit. We've been slated to have a Title II monitoring visit on, in May. We're waiting the firm date that we will receive that visit. Title II is the component that take, covers our mentor teacher pay, our professional development, and also it helps us with sign-on bonuses. So we're scheduled to receive a monitoring visit with that. CTE, proud to announce, FBLA competition. Five students competed and won, and they will move on to the state, which will be held at Reston, Virginia forthcoming. The advisor is Mrs. Bernard, and the students did very well. We're looking forward to them doing great things, just like our robotics team. The Virginia Preschool Initiative. We received our slots for this 2019-2020. We received 51 slots. Last year, we received 52 slots. Bring the board up to date with that. First registration will be tomorrow at SP Morton Elementary School. Currently, we have 27 students signed up, and we've contacted the Health Department also for immunization, so that we'll be in contact and make sure that our students have their proper immunizations when it's time to come to school. Our next dates will be held in April, and we're looking at having two more dates to cover those additional slots that we have coming up. And this concludes my report, and at this time, I take any questions from the board. Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Next, we'll have Ms. Barcota, Director of Instruction.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
On behalf of Franklin High School, I'd like to ask your permission for them to attend some overnight field trips. The first field trip is for the FBLA State Championship from April 5th through April 7th in Reston, Virginia. You want me to take them one at a time or go through all of them? Go through all of them. Okay? The second field trip is for the VHSL Leadership on April 5th through the 6th in Virginia Beach. The third field trip is for the Robotics District Championship from April 10th through April 13th. The next field trip is the VHSL State Track Meet on May 30th to June 1st in Elkton, Virginia.
I have a question about the first one. In one place, it says five students will be attending, and then another place, it says there will be seven students attending. I was just wondering, how many students?
It's five, Mr. Phil.
We reduced it to only the ones who qualified to say somebody.
Gotcha.
At first, we were going to take everybody.
Gotcha. I didn't know if there were alternates or...
You'll go ahead on and make that correction. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the field trip?
I make a motion that we approve the FBLA State Leadership Competition Field Trip on April 5th through 7th in Reston, Virginia.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Athletic Department Field Trip, April 5th and 6th to Kellum High School in Virginia Beach.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the field trip for the robotics team from April 10th to April 13th at George Mason University in Fairfax, Virginia.
Thank you, Jessica. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions?
I make a motion that we approve the field trip for the track team on May 31st to June 1st at East Rockingham High School in Elkton, Virginia.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, I'll have Mr. Spock come out from behind the camera and give us a technology
Thank you, Josh.
Good evening.
Good evening.
With the addition of all our phone books and other technology, we wanted to take a look and see what we can do as far as increasing our internet bandwidth. We're doing all right, but you know, we can always use more, especially if we're adding more stuff over the summer. So we used the E-Rate system to file 470, which is essentially a request for proposals for the vendors to submit their pricing and what they'll offer us. We did get some proposals back, including one from our current vendor, Charter Spectrum, and these proposals raise our current speed from 500 megabit per second to 1 gigabit per second, so it doubles the speed of our internet connection. We use the E-Rate metric system, which is the spreadsheet you put in some of the information from the bids into, includes price, reliability, and previous experience, things like that. And the Charter Spectrum contract did win out on that. It's a three-year term, and it basically is the same price we're paying now, but again, it's double the speed of what we've got. So I recommend moving forward with that proposal.
And this will be paid without E-Rate?
Yes, we get reimbursed 90% on our E-Rate, so you're only paying 10%.
One question about this. I did see on the service proposal that they had two, two that they put forth. One was the 12-month versus the 36-month pricing, which...
They submitted essentially two proposals, and one, and the one, the first one was if we wanted to go to the 12-month term.
Okay.
That's obviously more expensive. I'm not recommending that one. I'm recommending the three-year one.
What are we paying currently?
About $1,600 a month for that connection.
So really, there's no incremental? It doesn't look like there's an incremental cost?
No, it's essentially, it's the same price. We're just basically committing to that many more years, but they are doubling our bandwidth.
So we're looking to approve the contract under the three years instead of the one?
Right. We're just looking at the three-year one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Internet Services Contract with Charter for 36 months as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
And then lastly, we would just like to update the board and let you know that we are still working on all master schedules at all three schools so that the students can have their schedules before they dismiss school in June. Any questions on the schedule that was presented to you at the work session? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that instructional update. Next, we have the superintendent's overview. We are continuously working on our revising our strategic plan and what we discussed earlier this year. FCPS Strategic Plan Update Committees are meeting. Area One, Student Achievement, Efficiency of Operations, Positive Learning Environments and Communications, and Area Four, Technology Integration. Updates to be provided at the April 4th work sessions. We'll have heads of those committees come and speak before the board with suggestions and recommendations from their strategic plan committees. United Way on the Next Page Play Forward Tournament, One Swing at a Time. It was held Saturday, March 16th, 2019, Top Golf at Top Golf Virginia Beach, Virginia. Team members from FCPS was Kelvin Edwards, Demetrius Gray, and Dave Lees. This is a wonderful way to support United Way's efforts, and we're just making certain that we're out there and supporting all of our community efforts. Also, next month, we will be participating in a United Way Drive within, with all of our employees in FCPS, so stay tuned for that. And Chairman Holt and board members, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you for that, Sterling, report. Let's see, unfinished business. We've done the policy updates, the field trips, robotics, the track meet, Spectrum contract. We're at business by school board members. So I'll open it up for the board. We have our work session on April 4th. We have our next monthly meeting on the 18th of April. We have a SP Morton SOL Extravaganza on March 29th. Spring break, for those who wish to take it, is April 22nd through 26th. Other business by school board members. Dr. Hall-Lenner, do you have something?
I believe Ms. Grant does. She was not here for our last session, our regular session, and she was so instrumental in helping out with the Della Hayden marker. I wanted to see if she had something to share.
I just wanted to tell the board thank you, and I'm pretty sure that the Hayden Group also thanks us for working collaboratively with them and making sure...
also thanks us for working collaboratively with them and making sure that the application was submitted on time. So, I'm looking forward to seeing that come to pass as soon as it's approved. So, thank you.
So, now it's just a waiting game.
It's just a waiting game.
Thank you for doing that as well, and taking on that.
Thank you to Dr. Hall and Superintendent Sterling and Chairman Holt as well.
Thank you. I think some people are moving into the Hayden Project fairly soon, aren't they? Anything else?
Well, I have a review. Trying to see, did anybody else have some? But mine includes some other board members. My review for this period, there's the Read Across America that was held at S.P. Morton Elementary School, and I don't believe I was the only board member, I'm sure there was... Okay, Ms. Jester? I didn't see anybody else, because typically, we're all going at different times.
Yes.
But it's always really good to go out to S.P. Morton, Mr. Griffin, and celebrate with your students and Ms. Burkhalter. We included pictures, and you can see the team was at the back of the hall. I tried to capture that. But it was also, I believe, the launch for third grade, their kickoff, getting ready for working towards the SOLs.
I am very grateful that there is not a picture of me and my blue hair up there. So, thank you very much for not including that.
I did, I missed you.
That's okay. No, that's perfectly fine.
And so, I had the pleasure of reading to Mrs. Jenkins' class, Bright Starts. But it was, well, I thought it was very nice. The students were actively engaged in all classes, so it's always a pleasure to see that. As well as, I spoke to Mr. Griffin about how clean his building was. The school was just, it just looked so good. The billboards and all in the hallways, everything was really nice, just very nice. So, I applaud him for that and the efforts in their reading program. Also, several of us, and so I'm not saying too much, because I believe Chairman Holt and Ms. Phillips, they stayed for the duration of the Eggs and Issues, but I caught the beginning, as well as Superintendent Sterling, for the Legislative Breakfast that's typically sponsored by Franklin Southampton Chamber of Commerce. And for me, it's always good to mingle with our students. So, we applaud the high school and Mrs. Bernard for getting the students out, and they are always so dressed up. And I wanted to make sure I captured the picture of our speaker. She was introducing, I believe it was Delegate Rosalyn Tyler, Talia, let's see her last name, Sweat, Talia Sweat. She did an excellent job. You could tell she was very nervous, but she did a wonderful job. And so, it was, it is excellent, as always. But talking to the students around the table, we had an opportunity to talk about their next step, their next, you know, what am I going to do next? So, I was at the table with several seniors. So, even our representative for the board was there, she was at the table with me. And to hear the colleges that they're going to or they want to attend, they expressed their desires about careers. So, we talked about career paths and how they should prepare for questions as they're preparing, you know, to hear the legislators speak. So, that's always a nice time. Then also, we had students to attend the Cultural Arts Concert that was featured by one of our very own, Kelvin Lamar Carter, and myself, Ms. Jester, and Mrs. Phillips was also in attendance. And we had an opportunity to collaborate with Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and Kappa Alpha Psi, the local chapter, to encourage the youth in the community to come out, to be in support as a cultural arts event. So, that was well-attended, we enjoyed it, the music was amazing. Wasn't it amazing? It was. It was amazing, and it was a beautiful day. It was a beautiful day on a Saturday afternoon. So, we were pleased. And in this picture, we had one, I believe it was one high school student from Franklin High, Mr. Phillips, your student right there at the end. Is it two?
Tavashia Reed.
Okay, see there, see, I knew he would know.
Trayvon Phillips.
Yes, I wanted, I said, let me get this picture, because he would know his student. So, I'm always pleased to see Franklin City students show up. And also, let's see, what else we had going on here? Alright, now Saturday was a, it was a packed day, it was a full day for me. The Dining Etiquette Workshop was also held at The Village, The Village of Woods Edge, and once again, it's a collaborative effort with the sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and Franklin Southampton Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Incorporated. And so, the students you see here are students from Franklin City, Southampton County, and Suffolk City Schools. And they attended a dining etiquette, to talk to them about manners, what to do, the place setting, and it was really nice, always well-attended, very nice, the students were actively engaged here as well. Now, I don't know if you can see, Mr. Phillips, to identify your students, but I know I see Ariel as a young lady there, because some of them, I don't know all the students' names. And I know Trayvon, the two gentlemen were there, and I know Ariel Vaughn participated, and then some of the other students, I don't know their names, but I'm trying to pull out the Franklin City students who are attending some things in our community. There's a lot of things going on, and we want to continue to encourage them in our schools. And then I wanted to mention, didn't have the opportunity to attend, Ms. Phillips, and Ms. Phillips and I kind of keep up with what's going on at Appomattox Regional Governor's School of the Arts. So, the award-winning Dragon Scales Acappella Group traveled to Athens, Georgia for the ICHSA semifinals, and they did place third. And typically, they're up there like first place, but third place is still good. And so, right now, they are trying to move to the next phase, and so they have to submit a video of their performance for the next phase. And we are happy to report, we do have a Franklin City School student that is in the midst on that group here, that nice-looking group.
I can't imagine who that young man is, but he has a nice set of chops on him.
Thank you so much, Ms. Phillips. In addition, the strategic plan that Mrs. Sterling talked about in her report tonight, the superintendent's report, I want to thank Mrs. Burkhalter for her leadership and inviting not only employees or staff of Franklin City, but also she invites the community, community partners, and I serve on that committee. So, it was an active, active meeting, we had lots of information, we reviewed some things, made some edits, some recommendations. So, continue the work that you're doing with our strategic plan. And then the webinar, sponsored by VSBA, and I'm going to, I would like to encourage, if you've missed the webinar on the ABCs of Carving Out Pharmacy Benefits, you can go back to the VSBA website and click on Webinars on Demand, so that we can all have an opportunity to view the webinar. Early Intervention Reading Initiative has been attached, and that was also included, a little bit of it was included with Mr. Edwards' report tonight, under Federal Programs, and I have attached it for your review, and also a summary of the budget amendments. And I know you talked about, some of that was talked about or shared with the Eggs and Issues Legislative Breakfast, some of that was included, so I wanted to also include. As recent as today, I attended the Franklin Southampton Wellness Coalition, so an update was provided to all community partners for the Family Fun Day that is scheduled for June 22nd. And I was happy to report that Franklin City Schools in attendance was Ms. Mona Murphy for Opportunity Inc., so she was able to share out. And she, the school division has also completed the application to be a vendor. And she also, I believe she had the young lady that's working from, there's not Opportunity Inc. anymore, give me the correct name. She gave me a different name. Hampton Roads? That's it. Hampton, I need to write that, Hampton Roads... Workforce Council, that's what she said, Workforce Council. I said, well, it was previously known as Opportunity Inc., but she shared the information for Opportunity, in reference to the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, and she will have a table so that we're able to recruit students, have an opportunity to meet with parents during the family wellness, the Family Fun Day in June. Also, Mr. Kelvin Edwards was present, and Ms. Terri Zerfley for Parent Community Engagement. Information has been provided, and I will share that information with Board Members and Superintendent Sterling for her staff from Providence Psychological Services, as well as Optimum Health. The information, Optimum Health is available to come out and talk to parents and families, and so I will share that information with Mr. Parker for your Parents as Partners Meeting, that you can give that information to families. They have information on Medicaid expansion and that particular product, how families can actually get involved. So, I will share that information as well, trying to make sure I hit all my points. And I think that concludes my report.
I would like to add a comment also on the Chamber Eggs and Issues Breakfast. Our students from Franklin High School represented us extraordinarily well. There were students from Franklin Southampton, Southampton Academy, and Isle of Wight, and of course, I always were at the top of the list, I think.
In the Rock Church.
They all did a good job. Anything else?
I do have a couple of items. We did attend Dairy Queen Night back on the 7th, which is always a fun time, absolutely a fun time. And then this past weekend is still a blur on my radar, it was a busy weekend, as Dr. Hall Leonard knows, because we had a lot going on that weekend. Last Thursday, Ms. Sterling and I both attended the ARGS Board Meeting, where the Dragon Scales actually performed for us. They were absolutely phenomenal. And I hope that we can get them to come and perform for our students sometime in the future, I think our students would really enjoy that. One of the topics of discussion, as I mentioned at our last board meeting, was a tuition increase that they're looking at for Appomattox Regional Governor's School. And right now, they're looking at, they don't have it set in stone, but somewhere between a four and about a $580 per student increase to tuition, which would equate to, for us, it'd be around $3,200, I think was the top end of that we were looking at, which for us is not significant. But when you look at the other divisions, such as Chesterfield sends 120-some students, so that could have a huge impact to them. The big thing that we have to remember when we're talking about Appomattox Regional Governor's School, they're funded completely different from how we're funded. Our funding is typically made up of three major components. We have federal, state, and then local funding. Because Appomattox Regional Governor's School does not have a host division, like Franklin City is our host locality, they do not have a host locality, so they have no local funding. It is all state and federal. Anything else is made up by the tuition or donations. So, when a mandate comes down, such as came down for the pay increases for the SOQ positions, they don't have a locality to match. So, in order to give their teachers raises, that's how they make it up, is through tuition increases. And right now, looking at their teacher pay, and we just went through major conversations about this a year, year and a half ago here, their teachers at Appomattox Regional Governor's School in Petersburg are lower than our teacher pay here. Out of the 14 divisions that send teachers, that send students there, they are paid lower than any division that sends students there. And so...
And along those lines, we thank you, Mrs. Phillips, for sharing that. And as you were speaking tonight, I thought, you know, for so many families who are not able to, or don't have the resources for certain programs, and I believe that's why it's imperative that we embrace our community partners. For example, the, and we thank this High Street United Methodist Church for actually hosting the Cultural Arts Program, because that gives an opportunity, I thought, it's a Saturday for not only adults, but to expose our youth in the community to a different type of singing, you know, to opera. And he even included Mr. Lamar, what's his last name, I'm trying to get that, is it Parker?
Carter.
Carter, Lamar Carter, included some of the spirituals. If you notice, he did a little bit of Porgy and Beth's, it was really nice, it was always... But it was really nice. So, we want to make sure that we're embracing our community partners, such as the faith-based organizations who are able to sponsor things like that in our community, so that our students are able to participate in the arts. And so, in our schools, and all of this goes back to funding, that's why I'm bringing this, this is a budget season, but it goes back to funding. And so, when we talk to our community partners, our civic organizations, our faith-based organizations, we want to know, what can you do to support the schools? What can you do to help us? If you're having activities, let us know, so that our principals and counselors in the school can get that information, I mean, that information out into the community. And I know you've spoken about it a couple of times, Ms. Jester, in reference to, I think there is a down-the-middle foundation that's sponsoring some things. There's Camp 25 that's partnering with Franklin Parks and Recreation. In other words, it's going to take all of us to get it done, because not everybody will go to Appomattox Regional Governor's School of the Arts. Not every student will be able to go to the Governor's School of the Arts in Norfolk. And so, we want to make sure that we're sharing, that's one of the reasons, if I hear information, I try to share it with others, so that we're out in the community and they see us actively involved. And they know, okay, well, I may not go to the Governor's School of the Arts, but I may truly be talented to sing. And so, if I could find, you know, I believe Lamar Carter asked, he says, "I would like to do a concert." That was the information given to us on that Saturday. And someone says, "Hey, High Street United Methodist Church," raise their hands and say, "Hi, I'll take that on. I will allow you to come here to do a concert in the community," so that we're able to help him, you know, move to the next step in his life, which is education.
Education.
And so, that's near and dear to our heart, because we need more educators. And so, I just wanted to share that tonight. I really applaud High Street United Methodist Church for saying, "Okay, we'll take that on," and opening their doors of the church, and it was a freewill offering, so we do want to highlight things like that. But the students are doing some amazing work at the Governor's School of the Arts, and we are grateful for our appropriating body, City Council, for seeing the need for that, that we're able to continue to send students to the Governor's School of the Arts and Appomattox.
I agree. Also, I was not able to attend, but I did make the family go, to Parents as Partners back on the 14th. They didn't have a choice, they had to go. And just wanted to remind everyone, April the 11th, I believe, Mr. Parker's the next one, second Thursday in April. So, if you don't have anything on your calendars, absolutely go out, it is worth the hour you spend going out. You walk away from everyone with something.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
And then, of course, that's Saturday, the concert, Mr. Carter's concert at the Methodist Church. And then Sunday, I made the trip out to Churtenham for the first robotics competition. That was first time I'd been, but if you haven't been, go, absolutely go. I hate that, that was my first one, and now the next one is at George Mason. Because now I'm hooked.
Oh, yeah.
They, we made it as they were finishing up qualifications, which I, right there with y'all, disagree with that one call, but we're not going to go there. But went into, went into elimination round, and we were fourth, ranked fourth, and we were actually picked to join the second alliance. And went through semifinals, made it through semifinals, went through quarterfinals and made it through quarterfinals, and it ended up that the alliance that we were pitted against for finals included the Appomattox Regional Governor's School team. And we, I say "we" as in Franklin, but Mr. Yana and his team actually made it out as the number-one seed, the number-one alliance. They won first place. So, congratulations, Mr. Yana. And it was, I tell you, I'm hooked on robotics now, and I have one that is now hooked on robotics and wants to be on the robotics team next year, so we're going to find a way to make that happen.
And one other thing, maybe Mrs. Moore can help us with this. I believe there's another important date to remember. April... And one other thing, ma, maybe Mrs. Moore can help us with this. I believe there's another important date to remember. April the eighth, I'm looking at my calendar. It's April the eighth, trying to find it.
Spring Forum, the SBA Spring Forum.
Yes, it's April the eighth.
At Fred Cherry Middle School in Suffolk.
I knew I had it on my calendar.
You are, we're selecting the representatives for Franklin um School Division at your April fourth work session.
Okay.
So we have the artwork here, you know, tagged and ready for you to load then.
Thank you. I knew it was something else, yes.
I think we do have one more date. Is that March twenty-eighth for the Railtoers Luncheon?
Um, it has been changed.
It has been changed.
So I have, did not put it in this book because we're waiting on um.
Confirmation, okay. We're excited about that, so there's another date forthcoming.
And is March twenty-eighth our joint session with City Council as well?
Yes, it is.
Um, one other, if, if, if the board will indulge me for a minute, I think since the last time we met, uh, Mr. Yana, didn't you guys have your final um academic bowl since the last meeting? I think it, I think it was, I think it was the weekend after our last meeting. Um, do you mind filling us in on how that went?
Sure.
Since you're here.
And we appreciate you.
Good evening to the board, as Superintendent Sterling. Uh, so the Franklin High School Scholastic Bowl team had the opportunity to compete at the state level uh for Virginia High School League's Scholastic Bowl uh for um Region One. Uh, we fought very hard in our three matches against Honaker. Uh, let me get this right here, and on the spot last minute, I do apologize. So we had Honaker. Thank you, George With, and Rappa Hannock. Uh, Rappa Hannock should have been our, our winning match, uh, but we fell short by four questions. Uh, we were the only team that day to hold Honaker under three hundred.
Come on then.
Overall, it was a great learning experience for us, for our young team, so we have something to, uh, moving into next year, uh, to work from. So we are very, very proud of our accomplishments from this season and look forward to great things for the nineteen-twenty um uh season.
Thank you.
Hold on, Ms. Yana. Um, I think you, you, Mr. Yana, you, will you be, you possibly will be traveling this summer, is that correct? You just filled out an application to go to the Bahamas?
Uh, yes, it was kind of a, a last-minute deal, uh, per Ms. Burkhalter. She kind of filled me in on a Friday afternoon in the middle of my third block, uh, then get the application together. So we were putting things together over the weekend, yeah, and.
And I think it's to explore sea turtles in the Bahamas.
That is correct. That's my understanding. So we're just waiting to hear back on that to see how that will go.
And then we'll have one student from JP King that will be selected to travel for Jason's Learning Camp. So we're really excited about that opportunity and you actually going as well to bring back that knowledge as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
That is wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you, Miranda.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Anybody else?
Well, I, Mrs. Jester, we're getting ready to adjourn, but you've been quiet over there. You know you were at the concert.
I was at the concert, and it was amazing. But I also um went to the plays. Um, the two, one act, one act plays and one was written and directed by one of Franklin High School students. And as always, the theater just really always exceeds my expectations. It was a great time. Glad to be there.
Okay, I lied. I wasn't done. Um, one more, and I promise that's it. Um, Appomattox Regional Governor's School again. Um, and I, I missed it because I had it written right underneath them. Um, they are in the middle, in the midst of their spring production, um, theater production called Mr. Burns, um, which is a very eclectic play, and it's loosely based off of, and this is going to sound really weird, The Simpsons, but it's not The Simpsons. It's about the, the power plant. It's really, it's really eclectic, but it's really, really, really good. And um one of our students from last year that got into ARGS for this year is part of that, um, pre, that um presentation. So um if you are looking for a cheap date night and are headed towards the Petersburg Way, they have shows this Friday at seven, this Saturday at seven, and then a matinee Sunday at two. Um, it is five dollars for students of Appomattox Regional Governor's School, ten dollars for everyone else. So it's cheap date night. And it's a really good play. It lasts about two hours.
We done, I'm done.
Anybody else? Kelvin, would you like to come up?
Westlake season's over, so I'm gone.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I moved that we adjourned.
I second.